Hello. I would like to call this Planning Commission work session to order for Thursday, June 20, 2024. My name is Eldon Wogan and I'm the acting chair of the Planning Commission tonight. Before we begin tonight, I would like to announce that our Planning Commission work sessions are hybrid, both in-person and via WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the Planning Commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during this work session, but members of the public can watch or listen. The evening's agenda is planned as follows. We're going to call to order, and then we're going to start with a climate element update. I assume, Jenna, that's you. And then, Chris, you're on the agenda for OPMA training. And then there'll be any comments from the Planning Commission, if there's any, and then there'll be adjournments. So are there any questions? If not, then Jenna, why don't you take it over?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Slides are coming up. So for the record, my name is Jenna K. with Community Planning, and I'm going to be providing an update on the county's climate change planning project, primarily focused on resilience today. Let's go to the next slide. So our plan for today is to review how the climate element fits into the overall comprehensive planning process, provide a quick recap of the climate element requirements, a progress update on where we're at with our resilience sub-element, and then we'll look at next steps. Next slide. So you've seen this slide before. This is the high-level overview of the periodic update process. The checkmarks show items completed so far, and the climate change planning work relates to the items that are circled on this slide, which are about updates to the comprehensive plan text and policies, because that's where the new climate element fits into the bigger picture of this whole broader project. Next slide. And this slide is showing just a timeline specific to the climate element. So I'll just walk through it really quick. We, the county council, started, and the county started work on the comprehensive plan back in early 2023 with the adoption of a public participation plan in March of last year. And then, a few months later, in May of 2023, House Bill 1181 was signed into law. Following that, in June, so last year, we held a work session with the county council to brief them on the new legislation, which we then sent the second half of last year getting set up to start this project. So we had a climate stakeholder assessment where interviews were done with local stakeholders to help inform our public participation plan. The county council approved that public participation plan in November of last year, which then allowed us to start forming our advisory groups. And then, starting in early this year, our advisory groups have been formed, and now we're in those two orange rectangles where our advisory groups are regularly meeting, and we're doing other broader public engagement outside of those groups. And that's going to be happening throughout this year, which will take us into early 2025, when we hope to have a complete draft climate element, so that it's ready to go for the comp plan adoption process with you and the county council, starting in the summer of 2025. So this can be done by the due date, which is December of 2025. Let's go to the next slide. Okay. So next, we'll provide a quick overview of the House Bill 1181 requirements. So as you may recall from our last work session, House Bill 1181 was passed into law last year, and Clark County is in the first wave of adopters of this legislation. So no one, no other jurisdiction has implemented this legislation yet. We are in the first wave of those who have to do this. And the main things that this legislation does, it adds a climate change and resiliency goal to the Growth Management Act. It requires Clark County to add a climate element to its comprehensive plan, and this element has to address both greenhouse gas reduction and resilience. And the law also adds some new definitions to the Growth Management Act and includes themes like a need to address environmental justice, we need to use best available science, and we need to be consistent with the Department of Commerce guidance that was developed to help local jurisdictions implement this new law. And we need to do all of this by the end of 2025. Next slide. Okay. So for the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element, as you may recall, we need to come up with a list of goals and policies that the county will implement over the next 20 years that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions, reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita, and prioritize reductions that benefit our most vulnerable community members. Next slide. And then for the resilience sub-element, we similarly need a list of goals and policies that the county will implement over the next 20 years that will identify and protect and enhance natural areas, identify, protect, and enhance community resiliency, address natural hazards that are exacerbated by climate change, and prioritize benefits for our most vulnerable community members. Next slide. All right. So let's talk about where we're at. So at our last session in May, we introduced you to the legislation and this new requirement for this climate element. And so today, this is really an informational session to share a bit more on what we're learning as we're following the Department of Commerce guidance, what we're hearing as we've begun to work with members of the public, with our advisory groups, and our technical consultants as well. So for our public engagement, as you may recall, we have three advisory groups helping us with the project. So we have a community advisory group. This is a group of 20 county manager-appointed community members who represent a really broad range of interests, from, you know, business and development interests to environmental, you know, youth and interests, and many other interests as well. And this group is charged with working towards, using a consensus-based approach to develop a recommendation of goals and policies to be included in the climate element. We also have an environmental justice coalition, who are helping us engage with community members more vulnerable to climate impacts, and also helping guide development of an equity lens to use on this project. And then we have a partner agency team who is providing data, technical review, and feedback as needed throughout the project. Next slide. So in addition to this advisory group work, we have planned several opportunities for members of the public to engage and provide feedback along the way. So we collected, so far we've collected feedback through a questionnaire, and we have preliminary information available now, but we still have some more data trickling in from some of our environmental justice coalition partners. So we don't have a final summary quite yet on that. We hope that we'll have that by your July 18 work session. However, if you're interested in seeing preliminary data, I can share that with you all. Otherwise, we'll follow up with a more complete summary of what we have learned through that questionnaire. But in general, we were asking community members about what their experiences have been like with severe weather in the county in the past, to help us better understand, you know, what are some of the major issues that you've experienced here with things like when it rains a lot and when it's, we have hot weather. We have a community workshop scheduled for this Saturday, June 22. It's taking place at Anderson Elementary School from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. You're welcome to attend if you'd like. We will be having a presentation from our resilience consultant to the group who attends, and then also having some discussions around the resilience topic and what we can do about it. And then later in the summer and into the fall, we'll have another questionnaire and another workshop focused on greenhouse gas reduction. And then, the public can, of course, participate in the adoption process with the Planning Commission and county council in 2025. So simultaneous to this county staff-led engagement, we have our environmental justice coalition members conducting outreach on a similar timeline with community members more vulnerable to climate impacts. Next slide. All right. So that was engagement. Let's talk resilience. So this slide is showing the key tasks that we need to do as we follow the Commerce Guidance to implement this new legislation. We are focusing on resilience first, so that's what I'm going to be talking about today. We have been exploring climate projections and impacts, and we've identified applicable climate hazards here in Clark County, and we're now working with our advisory groups to start moving towards goal and policy recommendations. Let's go to the next slide. Okay. So to explore climate impacts, we have been looking at projections for natural hazards in Clark County in a business-as-usual or high-emissions scenario. And this is, again, we're following the directions in the guidance document, and we are using a web tool. There's a link here. You're welcome. You can go on it, and you can check out the projections yourself if you want to look more closely. But this, it's a web tool. It's based out of the University of Washington, where there's a climate impacts group. So they are the ones who created this tool that we are using. Next slide. And so we have a lot of data. We have a lot of maps and a lot of spreadsheets with various metrics. But if I think about the main points from looking at all of the information, if we look 20, 25 years out, what we can generally expect is that in any given summer, we can expect to see more hot days than we have, you know, historically. We can expect that our summers will be drier, we'll have less summer rain, and we're more likely to have summer drought. We are expecting in the next 20 years to have more high-fire danger days and more days with smoke than we have historically. And in the winter, we are expecting to have, you know, more, it'll be more common and more frequent to have severe winter rain or windstorms. And then, in certain parts of the county, we would expect more flooding and a higher likelihood of landslides.
I mean, interrupting the...
Okay. All right. Next slide. Okay. So through our initial exploration of climate hazards, projections, and data in the county, we've confirmed that the list of natural hazards listed on this slide all apply to Clark County, and we need to address them through our goals and policies based on the legislation. So we've got an excerpt of the legislation here on the right. And drought, extreme heat, flooding, extreme precipitation, landslides, wildfire, and wildfire smoke are all predicted to get worse here under climate change, and so we need to do, we need to do something to do better, to be better prepared to address those. Next slide. So besides, you know, looking at a lot of data for specific hazards with certain metrics for each hazard, we've also learned from our technical consultant team that hazards interact with each other. So, for instance, if we have more hot days during a summer, that can also increase the likelihood of wildfires as well. So they play off of each other. And then there are also social factors which can interact with the hazards too and affect the impacts we see. So for instance, older roads in the county may be more susceptible to damage from flooding than a newer road, and, you know, someone with a certain health condition might be more sensitive to hot weather than someone without that condition. So we know there's just a lot of factors that impact what the impacts could be. Next slide. We also are looking across a lot of sectors to make sure we are considering climate impacts really broadly and addressing these other two aspects of the legislation that are on the slide here. So we're trying to think through what are possible impacts to agriculture and food systems, buildings and energy, cultural resources and practices, economic development, emergency management, health and well-being, ecosystems, transportation, waste management, water resources, zoning, and development. Next slide. So we're looking at data. We've looked at the county's natural hazard mitigation plan. We've talked to various county departments, staff, and some of our agency partners for known or expected impacts. And we're also talking to people, though, about their personal experiences. And we've done this so far with our advisory groups, our environmental justice coalition through their outreach are asking about it, and our recent questionnaire was also asking members of the public to share their feedback and experiences with severe weather. Let's go to the next slide. So in your meeting packet, and there's a link in the slides here as well, we have a summary table of climate impacts, which goes through, you know, all of those sectors and for each of those hazards. Generally, what is it that we're expecting to happen in the county over the next 20 years in regards to climate impacts? So this is a draft document, but I know myself and other members of the project team, we're finding it really helpful for us to think about the impacts that we are actually trying to address in this resilience sub-element. Let's go to the next slide. Okay. So as we are wrapping up this preliminary background research, we are moving into the development of draft resilience goals and policies. And so this slide shows the approach that we are using to do that. So first, we need to develop a list of goals for each of the sectors. And then, for any goal that we have, we're going to need at least one policy to help implement that goal. And we're using an iterative process with our community advisory group and environmental justice coalition. And then, as we do county-wide public engagement, we're sharing what we're hearing back with those groups. And then we're also, once we've got a draft list, we'll be sharing it with our partner agency technical team to help review and provide feedback as well. So while our advisory group is really helping guide the direction of where this goes, the staff and the consultant team, we are very focused on, we just keep rereading the bill and the legislation to make sure we're being consistent with it. We're looking at the guidance to make sure we're being consistent with that. We're double-checking other county plans to understand, well, does this policy already exist somewhere else? Things like that. And then, once the, our advisory groups have a draft list, we'll do a little bit more analysis in a few different criteria, so that we can bring that information back to the advisory groups to consider before they make their final recommendation. And let's see, just on the side of the slide, we have a few examples of a goal and a policy, and these are actually existing goals and policies in the county comprehensive plan and other chapters. They happen to be related to resilience as well. But just to give a sense of, you know, what are we, what level of detail are we talking about? I think these are good examples of how, you know, comprehensive plan policies are pretty general. They're not usually super-specific. Let's go to the next slide. Okay. So this slide is, the past slide was looking at how we're working with our advisory groups to come up with a recommendation. But let's zoom out and look at the whole decision-making process, and we're at the Planning Commission. Where do you all fit into this? So we have our community advisory group considering information, they're hearing what we're hearing from the public, they're hearing from our environmental justice coalition, what they're hearing from vulnerable community members. And that community advisory group is tasked to make an initial recommendation. That recommendation, our environmental justice coalition will review it, they'll use the equity lens they've developed to make sure we're considering the recommendations with this equity angle. Their feedback will go back to our community advisory group, they'll come up with their final recommendation, and that's the final recommendation. Staff, we're going to put it, that the draft climate element, the main substance, will be their recommendation, and that's what's then going to go to you all to consider as part of the, when you're considering the draft climate element. Your recommendation will then be brought to councils, for the councils to make their final decision as part of the comprehensive plan adoption process. Next slide. So I have another, I have a lot of timelines in this slide deck, so apologies. This timeline is just looking topically. So so far, you know, we're pretty close to wrapping up Phase 1. We've been looking at a lot of climate data, exploring climate impacts, and we are in Phase 2, working on developing resilience goals and policies with our advisory groups. We hope to wrap that phase up soon, at least a preliminary draft list, and then we'll be shifting into focusing on the greenhouse gas reduction work later this summer, so that we can be moving towards final recommendations late this year and into early next year. Next slide. All right. And we can go to the next one. So just to wrap up, so we were here at your May 16 work session to introduce the legislation and this new climate element. Today, we're back with just an informational update on the resilience sub-element. And then we'll be back again in July, on July 18, with an informational update on the greenhouse gas reduction sub-element. Our greenhouse gas inventory is almost done. We're reviewing draft results, so we'll have the final version ready for you all then. And I think that's all I have, so glad to answer questions.
Thanks, Jenna. That was a lot of information. And I want to commend you, because you mentioned at the beginning that this is something new. No other county has done it yet, so you have no roadmap to follow on how, except what the guidelines or something, but you're kind of treading new ground. So congratulations. So for comments from other members, I'll start with you, Jack. Questions?
Well, first, thanks. I mean, this is, it, when you look at the list, it's big and it feels very nebulous without real strong brackets, and I think you're, you guys, you know, Jenna and Oliver, you guys are laying the groundwork for a lot of the other state agencies. You're going to see, well, what Clark County do? Can use you guys as a cheat sheet. So I think, I think my comments really come down to as much as possible that we can get solid brackets around or definitions around each element, so that we can actually make recommendations that are actionable. And I guess where I look at is, if we're looking at, in Clark County, flooding, then maybe there's, there's an element of, we've identified these X areas, these are the steps that we think we need to take to prepare for the floodings in the lowlands, you know, that we've identified. When we get to the, you know, carbon footprint and energy stuff, I know there's, there's housing code stuff that comes in there, but if the recommendation comes, all the houses need to, all the buildings need to be net zero, then, you know, then that would be like, okay, so we understand what that means, but then maybe there should be some, also some economic data around that. So like, if we say every house needs to be net zero that's built in Clark County, but we also understand that costs an extra $150,000 a unit to make them net zero, and then now it pushes a housing affordability out, which then is counter to climate justice goals or, you know, I mean, because there's, it interacts. So I guess, so for me, just, I'm really going to be wanting to see what we can actually recommend that people can go, okay, we can do that, and here's a roadmap to get to that point. Because I think the state has been very unfair in these big, broad paintbrushes of stuff, and then tell you, go figure out how to define what climate justice and what an equity lens is without, you know, and I think that's a challenge for our county and you guys specifically, unfortunately. But it would be really nice to, that we could create a really good framework to work from, so we can actually meet, I think, the well-intended goals. So maybe my comment, sir.
Thanks, Jack. Mark, you're online. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. I'm Mark Worth, old planning commission.
Mark, we can barely hear you.
Okay. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. I'll, I'll stay. I'm looking at what we've been over already, the adding people, jobs, low-cost economy, economical housing, and yet at the same time, we're going to have to reduce greenhouse gases and the miles driven. So you guys pull that off, I think we can classify you as walking on water. So I'm, yeah, whatever we can do to support it, hats off to you. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Mark. So I have a couple of questions. So when it comes to climate projections, is the state only using or recommending that they only use the University of Washington climate projections model?
They're saying, they have told us we should start with it, but we can supplement with additional resources as well. So our consultants have pulled in some additional information, especially the model does, it has some gaps in it, so they have brought in some other data sets as well. But I think the main, so they want, they wanted us to start there, so everyone's starting from the same sort of approach for the data. But the key thing is, for any additional data sources we pull in, we need to be able to show it's best available science, right? So they very much say you need to be using very broadly accepted data sets and information for any projection information you're considering.
All right. So is Clark County, then, are the consultants looking at other models to compare with the UW model?
They've, they've mostly supplemented as needed, where it seemed like the model didn't quite have enough detail or information, and they know there's additional information available. Some, you know, at the, there's a lot of, there's a lot of global, like, climate modeling, which isn't necessarily very helpful for Clark County. So the state tool is, it does pretty good, you know, in a lot of places, but then, like, I'm trying to think. I think, like, sea level rise and tidal flood, like, sea level rise, we're not on the coast, so it doesn't really show up right there. But they pulled in some extra data that shows sort of the impact of tide. As sea level rises, what that's going to do for our tidal rivers, you know, so the Columbia and the East Fork and Lewis River, for instance, the parts close to the Columbia, areas where we'd expect to see more flooding because of tidal flood. So anyway, in those specific instances, they're pulling in some other widely-accepted data sets.
I think you answered my question. The state isn't mandating that you use the UW, just saying, here, here's something to start with. But if you want to branch out and look at other models that, to fill in the gaps, or maybe to validate that the UW model is correct or...
Yeah, I think that's fine, and, you know, it's on the county to be able to defend it's using best available science. So if you use a recommended data set, that makes defending what you did much easier.
Of course. But I'd never like to see just using one set of models. That's just...
We, this is Oliver. We do have that flexibility, but Jenna is correct. Anytime you're looking at a model that the state is suggesting, they always ask us to make sure that it can be backed up. We have the flexibility to look at all the data and all the sources, but we also have to validate that that has, that source or whatever the data is have been purely reviewed and is best available science-based. For example, there are some areas where the county has the data, for example. If you look at waste reduction, what are, what is Public Health Solid Waste Department doing in waste reduction? For example, the state may not have that, but the county will have that data, and we can use that data as a good source of what the county, because you can go back and see what the practices have been, and we're documenting that. So in some areas where the state doesn't collect data at a local level, and if we have that data, we can use that as long as we can be able to support that source, and if we have been collecting it over the years, we can, we can rely on that, for example.
Okay. And then when it comes to resiliency, so my understanding is that you're gathering all this information from the advisory groups, and then there, is the output then going to be a whole list of developed goals and then policies? So there's going to be a long goal, a long list of goals and policies that are pertaining to the resiliency of those elements that you were talking about, agriculture, blah, 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 blah. Correct?
Yeah, that's right. It'll be a list of goals and policies, which'll, we will, they're working off of a table. Once they have a table, we're going to paste it into our, our new climate chapter.
And that's getting back to what Jack was mentioning. Goals and policies sometimes are nebulous, fluffy, and with no real meat on how you're going to do it, how it's measured. I hope that somehow that the county input, you know, takes that into consideration, that there should be key measures, you know, timing, cost, all the things that, you know, I'm sure Jack has the same concerns.
Yeah, that, that... That is going to be key, as well as challenging, as you know. I've said this before, and I'll continue to say this. Some of this resilience and... Some of this resilience and what we're going to be doing going forward, some of it is going to be costly. Some of it is going to be technology-driven, which have not yet been developed. But if you take, for example, we do get information, hey, comparable from utilities, for example, on here's how you're using, for example, electricity. Here's a comparison to your neighbor, what you can do to reduce your costs. It could be by buying new appliances, for example, which may be costly. But if you invest in that, over time, it will save you on your energy. So those type of things are going to be there. There are some technologies that are not yet, if you look at some companies, some of those may be yet to come online in terms of reducing their greenhouse or whatever the case may be. And for county buildings and others, there may be other things that the county will have to do. Hey, for example, to save energy. Those type of issues may come in terms of measurables. How do we measure and be able to, over time, say how close we are coming to whatever target the council will set for the county to meet whatever goals or target that are set. Over time, we are going to, and I'm sure, because anytime the legislature passes a bill, they'll come back, if they haven't already thinking about that, how are you going to measure progress? And we might be, right now, we do have a bill that says every five years, you have to look back and see how well we are doing, which is very related to the Buildable Lands Report. They may do the same thing on the climate bill. Five years from now, look back and see how well you're coming close to meeting their target. That's how I see this will happen going forward. And they may provide us funding for collecting data and how we measure some of these, some of the goals and strategies that will come out of this effort.
I'm sure that the members of the planning commission and the public would really like to see that and all the goals and the policies. In my employment, we did a lot of cost benefit analysis. And so that's what I key on. It's going to cost this, but here's the benefit. And then the people can decide if that's really what we want to do. So I hope that's what, the attitude that we take.
I can, excuse me, I can just add, the Commerce Guidance does have us do, they call it a multi-criteria analysis, which is, you know, we can't study everything, but we can pick a few criteria to analyze for draft policy ideas to help inform the decision, you know, what the advisor groups recommend, and then you all can see that too for, to inform what you want to recommend.
So Jenna, basically what you presented tonight is here's an overview of what we're looking at on resiliency. Over time though, the real meat is going to be in those formation of the goals and the policies and the key metrics that go with them. I mean, that's going to be the real meat. That's where the rubber's going to hit the road when that gets done. So, so I look forward to helping on that and seeing. And then my final question is, and this really comes down to definition, I have no idea what an equity lens means. That, to me, that is such a subjective, wishy-washy term that, that's my comment.
Yeah, no, it's a good point, right? Because what does that, what does that mean? So I, I guess what I can say for now is the legislation gives us a definition of environmental justice, right? And we've been working with our Environmental Justice Coalition on what are some questions we can ask, you know, as we look at a policy idea? What can we ask to think about to help evaluate, does this policy have potential to improve equity, right? Which a lot of it's in the details, right? So.
And as I think that, you say you're going to look at this through the equity lens. To me, that sounds subjective, subjective, subjective. And it's crazy. Anyway, I don't have any other questions. Jack, did you have any more or?
I, I think my last comment is dovetailing on what you're saying as far as really just drilling down on cost of, of really putting numbers to other things. Part of it is just definable goals, because we might, let's say the net zero house example, it might be better for the county then to encourage a solar, large commercial scale solar farm somewhere that would actually do better and more cost effective to reduce that than changing everybody's appliances just because of, of scale and stuff. So some of those things can really create some informed decisions. One of the issues I've had with the state building code is, is the fact that they don't allow you to buy into too large solar farm credit, which is something we're trying to work on, versus putting individual solar panels on houses, both of which would serve the same goal, but one is a lot, you know, significantly more efficient and professionally managed than me with a scrub brush on top of my roof kind of thing. So, but it would be, it would be nice to, to help, to help guide policy with some really good factual stuff, so we can actually, you know, attain some of these goals. So, thanks so much, guys. That's a lot.
Can I jump in? I wonder if some of the things that you're talking about are things that will be addressed. So once the, the big overarching, or as you might say, wishy-washy goal has been adopted, and it might be that, some of those things might, might be addressed through code at a later date. If you talk about, you know, just an example here that's coming from my head, not anything real. If you talk about increasing reliance on solar energy as opposed to fossil fuel, and that's the goal, that could accommodate either the commercial solar farm in, in a code or it could accommodate individual provision of solar panels on houses. So I don't know whether this is correct, but I wonder if some of those concerns about specifics might be addressed when code is written, which is usually the more specific kind of provision. If you look at the comp plan, there's not a whole lot of, you know, well, the lot has to be this big and the, here's the setbacks and, you know, stuff like that. That, that's typically found in code.
I, I would agree with that. It's like you can't get too granular, and this is not a granular plan. So I absolutely agree with you on that. But I do think some, some larger, broader overviews of kind of what, what the goals are and policies and putting some numbers to that, that we wouldn't have to necessarily dive, I mean, we wouldn't want to dive into rewriting the building code, right? And there's also, quite frankly, like as we look at, and I don't know how this is a part of your planning process, but housing specifically, our building code is ramping up to a net zero house over the next 20 years. So that kind of dovetails already into, you don't have to do much from that standpoint because the building code is already doing that for you. So, yeah. But no, I agree with you because it can get really too much.
All right. Before we leave this subject, and Jenna, Mark, did you have any other questions or comments?
No, I did not. Thank you, Al.
All right. Well, then I think we're done with your subject, Jenna. That doesn't mean you have to leave. Let's see, who's next on the agenda? Oh, OPMA training with Chris Cook.
Thank you, Al. So Commissioner Haroun is gone for the day or what? Okay. All right. So there are two commissioners here. And I, I think Commissioner Berkholz, Berkholz took the OPMA training that was given. Did you take that? Were you, you were not present for that? Well, this is going to be a little different anyway. It's going to focus more on, on how the planning commission addresses these issues. So the OPMA was, next slide, please. OPMA was adopted by the legislature, excuse me, in 1971. So it's, it's been around now for more than 50 years. And that was a year before the people adopted the Public Records Act by initiative. So that's also been around. That's another source of openness in government, but it's not what I'm going to be talking about today. If you want to see the provisions of the OPMA, they're at chapter 42 dot 30, Revised Code of Washington. Next slide, please. There are other requirements about open meetings and notice and so forth outside the OPMA, but they're related to the OPMA. So the Growth Management Act requires that the public have notice and the ability to review and comment on legislative proposals. That's set forth in 3678, and that should be 035. And it's also a goal of GMA, set forth at 3678 020. In addition, Clark County Code requires that public hearings, requires public hearings on all type four legislative matters related to planning. And those hearings have to be preceded by a 15-day public notice period when the agenda is published and when the items having to do with the meeting are available. So we see open, open meeting stuff around. And last but not least, there have been a number of lawsuits about OPMA and public records and so forth. And so there's been the development of significant appellate case law. There's a whole body of case law that you can't really understand the OPMA too much if you don't read some of that stuff. So what I'm going to go through now is looking at some of the definitions and why they require, how they require that the planning commission abide by the OPMA. And in some, some respects, the definitions are the most important parts of the act once you get beyond the general notion of the act. If you meet the definitions, the OPMA applies to you, and you have to do it. So first of all, Clark County is a public agency, and that's, RCW 4230 020 is the definition section. So it's a public agency in the state of Washington. In addition, the planning commission is a public agency. And that's set forth in 020 sub 1 sub C, which says that a public agency means any sub-agency of a public agency, that's the county, which is created by or pursuant to statute ordinance or other legislative act. Well, the planning commission was created pursuant to statute and by Clark County Code, so it meets that, including, but not limited to, planning commissions. So planning commissions are specifically noted in the statute, in the definition. So the OPMA applies to the extent that it applies to public agencies. Well, in addition, the planning commission's a sub-agency. It was created or created pursuant to statute or county ordinance. And the planning commission is a governing body. Well, you might not have realized that you're governing, governing, but you are under the OPA. Governing body means the multi-member board or commission or committee, goes on, of a public agency. And you are a commission of a public agency or any committee thereof when the committee acts on behalf of the governing body or takes testimony or public comment. Next slide, please. Sorry, next one. There you go. So first of all, you're a multi-member commission. Second, you act on behalf of the county council by providing opportunities for public involvement. Some people can't make it to council hearings, and they come and testify before the planning commission instead, or they present written comment to the planning commission. All of that creates a record of the staff's recommendations and of the basis for the planning commission's recommendation to council, and it creates a record of public participation. All of those things are required by GMA. And then last but not least, the planning commission certainly takes a public comment and conducts, conducts hearings. So next slide, please. So once we've gotten through the definitions, planning committees, or meetings are declared open and public. That's the heading of the statute here. That's kind of the, the requirement of OPMA. So all meetings of the governing body, that's you, the planning commission, of a public agency, so again, shall be open and public, so that's mandatory. And all persons shall be permitted, again, mandatory, to attend any meeting of the governing body of a public agency, except as otherwise provided in this chapter. So that's kind of important. If there's a meeting, it's public, anybody can attend unless there is an explicit exception. So next slide, please. And in addition, the second part of that statute, and this one was recently added or portions of it during the pandemic. Public agencies are encouraged to provide for the increased ability of the public to observe and participate in the meetings of the governing bodies through real-time telephonic, electronic, internet, or other readily available means of remote access that do not require an additional cost to access the meetings. So we must not only make it possible, but we must encourage the public to attend remotely if they wish to. Next slide, please. So here are a couple of issues. The first issue is, okay, how do we read the law? The Growth Management Act is what we say in the legal biz, it's strictly construed. And that's because it was the result of a lot of, one would say, political sausage making. Many compromises were made. There was lots of conflict in the legislature about it. Some people might have wanted it to go one way and think that the words meant one thing. Some legislators might have thought it meant something else. So it's, it is strictly construed. The courts will not go beyond the words of the Growth Management Act if they can help it. In contrast, the Open Public Meetings Act is liberally construed to advance its purpose. And that's actually a statutory requirement. It's 42.3910, and the courts echo that. So one of the significant appellate cases is Wood versus Battleground School District from 2001. And there, the court said, we recognize that the statutory statement of purpose in the OPMA employs some of the strongest language used in any legislation. So remember, meetings have to be open to the public unless an exception stated in the law applies. Here's the Legislative Declaration of Purpose. The legislature finds and declares that all public commissions, boards, councils, that all public commissions, boards, councils, committees, subcommittees, departments, divisions, offices, and all other public agencies of this state and subdivisions thereof exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of this chapter that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed and informing the people's public servants of their views so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. For these reasons, even when not required by law, public agencies are encouraged to incorporate and accept public comment during their decision-making process." So that's the purpose that's being advanced by the OPMA. Next slide, please. So here's the next question. It's one of these definition things. So what's a meeting? If all meetings have to be open and public, when's there a meeting? Well, that's a really good question. And here, the OPMA is dreadfully unhelpful, the definition of meeting in the OPMA, unfortunately. Meeting means meetings at which action is taken. Thank you very much. So what is a meeting? And the Washington Supreme Court, in looking at that, said, "Well, they didn't even define it at all." And I think it could be read to say that, yeah. So the Supreme Court, in examining when there was a meeting, stated a definition. And it said that a meeting of a governing body occurs under the OPMA when a majority of its members, the governing body's members, gathers with the collective intent of transacting the governing body's business. So let's dive into that. In the case where the Supreme Court made that statement, a majority of the governing body was also the quorum. So that was the number of members of the body that could have made a decision. But when we're looking at that, we're not just talking about making decisions. We're talking about all the different sorts of business that are conducted under the OPMA. So discussions are business. A discussion of policy is business. It doesn't have to be a vote. There doesn't have to be a proposal even. Deliberations are business. Taking testimony is business. Voting is business. All those sorts of things, those are business. And so that suggests that if a majority of a governing body, and it's kind of helpful because majority is a quorum of the Planning Commission, too, if a majority are talking about county business, then that's a meeting. If a majority are talking about whether you're going to have the teriyaki plate or fried rice, I would say that that is not the same thing. And it doesn't apply to that. So the question is, and this is probably easy enough to figure out in real life, you talking about stuff that the Planning Commission does in your official capacity? Or are you talking about dinner? Are you talking about something social? Are you talking about your kids and your grandkids and what they're doing for the summer? You know, those are different. So, next slide, please. All that having said, email's an interesting aspect of Public Records Act. The Wood case back in 2001 came to the conclusion that the exchange of emails can constitute a meeting because government officials, and nobody conducts business solely at in-person meetings. Things are done electronically. And so the court said, "A definition of meeting that would require the physical presence of officials in the same location would contravene the OPMA's clear purpose." So when you talk about gathering under the definition in the Alliance for Property Rights case that the Supreme Court gave, you're not just talking about getting together in the meeting room or chatting in the elevator or what. You're also talking about other communications that include the county's business. Discussions, deliberations, reviews, evaluation, all those things. Next slide, please. Having said that, there are some limitations on that. If, for example, one planning commissioner has a question of staff and emails Oliver about it, that's not an OPMA violation because, even though there might be a discussion, number two limitation would prevent that from being an OPMA situation. The OPMA applies only to email exchanged by a majority of the Planning Commission, and the courts have ruled that collective intent to take action on county business is required. So sending email to the entire Planning Commission on county business, as opposed to, say, one other commissioner or staff or your attorney or so forth, that's not an OPMA violation if it's just one. But if it's to the whole Planning Commission, that is an invitation to violate the OPMA. Don't do it. Get that, you know. We all get email that's addressed to all of us, and it's really easy. I've done it, you've probably done it, everybody I know has done it. You use that same list of recipients. I'm asking you to whittle it down. If you need to talk to Oliver, talk only to Oliver. If you need to talk to me, talk to me. If you want to ask one person on the Planning Commission something, do that. And then the other thing I would love is if all of my clients, both staff and officials of Clark County, had some way of, if we had some way of removing the Reply All function on your email. Reply All is bad news. Please don't do it. In the first place, I would say that pressing Reply All is a demonstration of intent to have the majority involved in whatever the email is about. And second, it can be a public records nightmare. And we're not even going into that now, but you don't want to search your email for public records. And if you send something to all the commissioners, they all would have to search their email, too. So don't do it. Finally, the OPMA does not apply to the passive receipt of email. There has to be some exchange, some conversation to be a discussion or a deliberation or so forth. So if somebody sends you something, and it looks like it's county business, and you don't want to be involved in an OPMA issue, don't respond to it. That's the simple answer to that situation. All right, next slide, please. So there it is, the latest on OPMA. Eldon or Mark, do you have questions? Or Oliver?
I don't, but, you know, in business, we went through some of this training also in business. We were told not to do Reply All either. Not so much from the standpoint of violating an open meeting, but the standpoint that it's creating too much, too many emails for people to shift it through.
Yeah.
Because you reply to all, you're usually just wanting one person to respond, not everybody.
And who needs 500 emails in your inbox?
And so like when I worked at Hewlett Packard or other companies, I was really frowned on to do that. So that's kind of in the bread. But I'm with you, they should just take that thing out of there.
Oh, yeah.
Leave it as an option, Reply All.
Thank you. Maybe we can make that happen. Mark?
I'm good. Chris, you've been very patient with me and reminding me, so hopefully I've got it through my head.
Well, if you're replying all about chicken or tofu, it's probably not a big deal. But it would really be good to think about it before you do it and get out of the habit.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Oliver? You're muted.
Sorry. No, I don't have any questions. We do get oracles about OPMA violations. And when you read what they are, you will be amazed as to the level of caution that Planning Commission members or those that serve on board are required to follow. And what I will only say is that, for example, with COVID that prompted the legislature to add the opportunity for having a webex or other tools of communications, that that's a recognition of change in dynamics that we find ourselves seeing. So I will encourage the PC to, from time to time, as Chris indicated, as a board member, some of you serve up to more than four years or six years, or, you know, six years as the term, to regularly take the OPMA so that you are most current if there are changes made to it because the legislature, they also have their own issues, as you know. They try to exempt themselves from the public record and have not been successful, if I may say so. So that's the only comment that I have that. And when you do take it, I will have opportunity to talk to other PC members that are not here that they should, from time to time, at least follow the guideline of refresher courses going forward.
Do you keep track of PC members who have gone through the OPMA training? I mean, or is it just?
That's a really good question.
That's a good question.
And we ought to. And once you take the state's OPMA training, they offer you a certificate if you want it. I've never printed mine. But I would suggest that every Planning Commission member get that certificate and ship it to Jeff.
And have it on file.
So that we have it on file.
Yes, we would like to have it on file.
Because, you know, in business, we'd get an email saying, "Oh, you are due for this training to come up." So I don't know if you want to get that official, but.
I would like to get that official so that we have it. It is an important subject, yes. Thank you for bringing it up, yes.
No. No, I would say not that.
Not that, um.
That is not a big area of litigation. Port of Vancouver has been sued. The case, one of the cases I quoted to you was Battleground School District. Yeah, yeah. It was in connection with a big brouhaha having to do with, you know, firing the superintendent and so forth. These things typically happen related to something else that's going on. Okay. Oh, I bet you were, yeah. So we do our best, from my office, to advise all our clients on public records and open public meetings. And that's one of the reasons, reasons why my boss, Leslie Lopez, the Chief Civil Deputy, you know, sits up with the county manager at council meetings. And, you know, she tries to keep everything on the up and up. And we take those trainings as well. And that's something that our office does.
Well, you must do a good job at it, then.
We're very trying.
All right. So thanks, Chris. That was very informational.
Thank you.
So Mark, did you have any other comments?
No, I don't, Eldon.
All right. Well, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks so much.